Meeting of the year 2018. Hope everyone had a very happy New Year and a joyful Christmas holiday season. And we're happy to be in the thaw phase of our latest winter event. And before we get started, I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of everyone up here with me, but I want to thank on our behalf everyone who was involved with keeping this town functioning during the hard winter freeze that we just experienced. Our employees for sure, particularly our electrician, our street department who were called out at all hours of the night to attend to matters that were bringing discomfort and concern to our constituents, customers, and friends. Job well done, we appreciate it. And also to thank the out-of-town assistance that we got from the North Carolina Department of Transportation who brought in some heavy equipment to help us move the snow and ice off our streets, otherwise it'd be two or three more days before we saw the pavement. So, great collaborative effort, very positive results, fix a few pipes and move on. So, thank you again for all you did. Now, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, after which Councilman Poole will lead us in an invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, our God and everlasting God, we thank you for another opportunity in a new year to serve you and to serve the people of this town and community. We thank you for the obligation that you would teach us, Lord, that we would go and do, make the right decision. We ask that you would bless each councilman, bless the mayor, bless each and every one of us in our endeavor. And we ask that you would just continue to bless the community, help us to grow, give us a mind to proceed and do the right thing, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Okay, the first order of business tonight is a hearing. And this will be a quasi-judicial hearing. This is one of the occasions where this type of hearing needs to be conducted because of the nature of the subject at hand. So therefore, I will ask all of you who intend to present findings in this matter to please stand and I will administer a brief oath to you, and then we can move on with our program. And before that, I'd like to welcome John DeLucia to be part of this presentation. So, here we go. In the matter before you tonight, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether the structure at 130 East Freemason Street is dangerous or prejudicial to the public health or public safety and should be demolished or removed pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-193. And with that intro, I'll turn it over to Ann Marie and she can get us rolling.
I'll get you started and just let you know, Mayor, that all of the work that is before you tonight was coordinated by Elizabeth Bryant. Our previous planner, Sam Barrow, had started enforcement, and then with his deployment, we got put on hold, but when Elizabeth came on board, one of the first complaints that she received was the condition of this structure. So Elizabeth contracted with John DeLucia, or Elizabeth got the town to contract with John, to do an assessment. So John is here as the engineer who assessed the building and the structure, and then based on his assessment, Elizabeth worked with attorney Ben Gallup, one of the attorneys in Hood's office, and went through the process that got us here tonight, which is quite involved in terms of noticing, doing research on who the property owners are, and then noticing. And so Elizabeth, did you want to just briefly review that process? And then I think Hood will give an overview of the steps that the council should take to accept, to receive the expert testimony and roll from there.
Yeah, I think, just to be clear, Ann Marie, so we don't duplicate, I would consider Elizabeth's testimony as sworn testimony and part of the record that you will consider and make.
Thank you. So you all, good evening, first of all, and you all have an extensive amount of information in your packet regarding this property. One of the things you'll notice is a directive from the building inspector from October of 2017 to me declaring that he felt the structure was unsafe. That was based on multiple complaints over several years regarding this property, and then finally reaching a condition where we needed to make a determination about the structure's danger to other properties around it and people passing by. So after that, we began the enforcement process and really sought some information, great information from Ben Gallup about what the statute will allow, what determinations have to be made in order to declare a building an imminent threat or an imminent danger according to general statute. And one of those determinations is, or one of those items is a engineer's report detailing the safety of the structure. John will talk about that in a minute. But after we received the report, we were required to notify all property owners of record. Luckily, we had a title opinion done by Mr. Ellis's firm that gave us some information to go on about multiple heirs and where to reach them, but we were able to send certified letters to all of the property owners that we had information on and even dug up one person's address that we didn't have. You found in your packet, I think, an electronic confirmation of receipt or of those letters to the owners of record. The only two heirs that are living that we were able to reach were Mr. John Skinner, who is in White Plains, New York, and Mr. Carl Halsey, who now lives in Enfield. And Mr. Halsey's letter details pretty well how the property came to be in this condition, multiple heirs, passing away, leaving to multiple heirs, and so on and so forth, until the pool of people with interest in the property becomes quite large. Mr. Skinner, it seems, has kind of exercised primary interest in the property, and I have been able to talk with him several times, including today, by telephone regarding his intentions and his awareness of the condition of the property. He has at no time disputed the property's condition. He has expressed some interest in possibly pursuing demolition on his own. However, I did explain to him that we've now reached the point where we've found the structure to be an imminent threat, and I'm sure Hood will speak to that a little bit more later on. If any of y'all have any questions about the notice requirement or my discussion with any of the property owners before I ask John to speak on the condition of the property, I'm happy to answer it now or later. Okay, John?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm John DeLucia from Albemarle &amp; Associates. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I've been practicing in eastern North Carolina since 1985. I have four beautiful children, one from ECU, one from Chapel Hill, and one from UNC Asheville so far, and one's 11, still in sixth grade. Happy to do this report for you. As Elizabeth said earlier, the town had contacted me sometime in, oh, September and asked me if I would be, would like to look at these several structures, and this may be one of them, because they were in poor condition. So on October 27th, it was a Friday, I met with Ms. Bryant and two of the building inspectors on the property and did a fairly thorough exterior inspection of the building. I was able to look in through the front door because it was open, part of the side, the west-east side of the building, one story, has a roof missing, and you could look in that area also. I did not go into the structure. Quite frankly, I was leery about going inside the structure. The structure's 100 years old by the town records. It's a wood-framed structure on cinder blocks and concrete masonry units. The first floor living room area right inside the front door has collapsed to the ground, which is approximately two to three feet above the floors, two or three feet above the actual ground level. When that collapse occurred, I presume that it damaged the foundation and the western wall. There's a lean in the foundation on the western wall. The roof is in pretty bad condition. If you look at the building from the front, it looks like it's smiling at you. That's indicative of internal rot, internal support loss. I'm sure when the floor fell out, that caused some other ramifications within the structure. It was also obvious that kids, gang members, or people were going into the structure. There were some spray-painted logos and things on the walls, which would be very dangerous, in my opinion. I'm very concerned about this house because it's so close to the house, just to the west of it. There's a two-story section there. That's the wall that is leaning out at the foundation. As I had told Elizabeth before, when we look at houses that are in this type of condition, they're caused by water and infestation and old age. Water is more powerful than dynamite, it just takes a little bit longer. The water that's gotten into these buildings has caused rot, it's caused connections to become unstable. With a two-story building and a wall that is obviously starting to lean toward the adjacent neighbor to the west, this house really does need to come down as soon as possible. Ben Gallup had asked me, and Elizabeth had asked me, if it was possible to temporarily shore up the building to give it a little bit more time, and quite frankly, it may be possible, but it would, it's also likely that trying to shore the building up could cause additional collapse of the building, so probably the best thing to do would be to take this building down. I don't believe it's repairable, it's certainly not habitable. With the conditions that I saw inside the house, just looking from the front door, it's my opinion that this is a real danger to the community. It could collapse, it could hit the house next door, it could cause problems out on the street, and it really does need to come down. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
John, clarify one thing, when you were talking about shoring the building up, what would the estimate be of cost to do that, even if you could? I mean, what I'm trying to get at is, just in case that comes back, you know, maybe we should have shored it up, well, it would have cost more than the house worth, probably.
Probably, and you'd probably have to get onto the next-door neighbor's property to do it. I mean, it's a two-story wall that's about 15 or 20 feet away from the structure that's next to it, so if it collapses in that direction, it will probably hit that structure.
John, the next-door neighbor let me know just a couple of days ago that she's noticed, about four days ago, three young girls walking in the house and using their flashlight app on their iPhone just to see their way around. Is there a way we can post signs to keep out, stay away? I don't know if that's going to do any good, but I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt.
Putting the lock on the front door would be my first suggestion, however, with the damage to that one-story eastern room, it really appears like kids are climbing in and out through the wall there. It would appear to me that's how they're going to go. Because when you walk in the front door, the floor is literally going downhill, and that whole northwest quadrant of floor has collapsed to the ground.
And we do have signs, pardon me, that are posted at the property declaring it unsafe, posted on the front of the house and a yard sign in the front, so it is posted that they should not be entering.
But can you put a lock on the door?
Like he said, we could, but there's enough deterioration-
They can get through.
-in several parts of the house that they can get in-
Getting that way, yeah.
...through the wall.
That's what scares me the most, is kids going inside there and something coming loose.
There are several signs posted on the house in the yard, but most people that go into these type of houses, that they're either looking for a place to stay or they're a gang. I saw, I've been there, and I saw gang markers, look through the window and see where they have gang markers. Been inside, there's huge places out there. And as far as the cost, you can't, you can't put a charge. The best way, if anybody's going to renovate that building, is tear it down and build a new one. So, I worked with this type of job for years, and you go in, the wall is buzzing out, that means the seals is rotten. And when you start doing that, you got to take the seals out, you got to take the floor joists out, you got to take the floor out, and you can take your stuff out with your hands, but you can't put it back with your hands. And being a two-story house, it would be almost impossible, so you got to start from the ground up. There are many houses in this area that, well, in this area and North Carolina, that are infested with termites, they call these terrain termites, and they're like a hunk, and they get out, scout out, and they find a place, then they bring the old crew in. And you can't get rid of them after they really take over like that, so it's kind of bad, because if this is property that's supposed to be everybody owning, everybody don't own the property, because they owe taxes on it, and they don't pay the taxes, it's not theirs. I think, I think we need to look into this and make some, not this, not this house, it needs to be tore out, here. But there are many other houses in the area, because I talked to inspectors many, quite a few years ago, and there are a lot of houses that, if nobody lives in these houses, this is me talking, and they cut the lights off, the city cut the lights off, they cut the water off, and the tax knows that they, the last day that they paid taxes, or the last year they paid taxes. And these houses go record five years, and they should, whoever owns it should be noticed if you don't fix it up. It's more important to keep the house presentable and safe around other neighbors than it is to charge you for not cutting the grass. That's important, too. But the house should be kept up by somebody, or like old car, you ain't going to use it, you can't let it sit in the front yard for junk. So I think we really need to city, the town need to look into these, the way we go into these houses that need to have been gone five years ago.
Yeah, I agree with you. Any way we can speed up that process, I think is good. This house was owned by a man named Dan Halsey, one of the most wonderful people that I've ever known. We used to take him dinners and stuff, and I'd go in there. As a child, it was in perfect shape, and it's really sad for me to see these kind of important historic architectural houses fall down. So I mean, I think anything we can do to speed up the process of making sure this doesn't happen, you know, we've got a lot of things on the books, we've worked really hard to get going, but I think this is a good lesson, and the faster we get going, the better off we can put this house and stock it back in use, somebody that's going to pay the taxes.
Two points. One, and Elizabeth can speak to this, it's unusual, the property owners have been paying taxes. They paid their taxes, one property owner paid January 2nd, just a couple of days ago. Very unusual circumstances.
Well, then there's not much we can do about it.
But number two, in terms of the danger, Hood, does the town, do we have the right, can we lock the front door even though there would be access to the other way? Another option is we could reach out to the one property owner that's been responsive and ask for him to give us a no trespass authorization, and then the police could enforce no trespassing.
I'm sure in this instance, the town could take action to try to safeguard the property, keep people out of it, given the condition of, I mean, I think within our police power, that would follow with something that we could definitely do.
But I would like to also reiterate that this is the whole reason we did the demolition by neglect ordinance in the first place, and this is the first property that we've had to deal with, and it shows the complexity of what it involves to bring it down, even when all these things are known. I mean, just by eyesight, if nothing else, much less a professional opinion. So anyway, I'm happy that we're at this juncture, and I don't think at this stage we need to be doing any more rearranging of deck chairs, we need to go ahead and bring it down.
I agree with you. Soon as possible.
I mean, all the, all the criteria that we have to follow under the ordinance has been met, correct? So, I mean, there's nothing to hold this process back at this moment, and the longer it stays there, the more dangerous it is to the people walking up and down the street and the people who are going in and out of there for whatever reason. So, I think we should be as emphatic as we should be in getting the first demolition team on the job that we can find, unless there's any kind of thing that would hold that process back at this point.
John, just to be clear, it's your expert opinion that this house poses an imminent threat to public safety, danger to life, health, and the property, and therefore is a public nuisance and unsafe for human habitation?
Absolutely.
And we would rely on John's expert opinion, and also you had his report, which is, we'd also offer him the evidence.
Very good. Thank you, John. Anybody else have any questions or comments about this one, at this juncture?
And Mr. Mayor, I don't think there's anybody here, you know, I don't believe any of the owners are here, but in case there was somebody that wanted to ask John a question, we certainly would offer him that opportunity.
Okay, and the floor is open right now for that purpose, if anybody has a comment, some questions.
I think Elizabeth, and she's indicated to y'all, but she did a great job getting in touch with everybody that we could, and the two people have reached out, don't seem to disagree at all with the fact that the house needs to come down.
I like to say, this type of property is called our property, and that's why I said no such thing as our property, because I know, I've seen it several times in my work, in working with these houses, I had to go estimate, could you fix it? And so, there was no fixing, but people still lived there. But our property is people that keep the most flush, ain't paid no taxes, ain't tried to keep up the house, or nothing. I've seen people live in the houses until they fall down, and then they walk out and go get some other place to stay. And they didn't pay no rent, and they didn't pay nothing but taxes, but they wouldn't keep up the house. So when you go and investigate, send out letters and all this other stuff, and people laugh at you, because they say, "Papa didn't own the house," or they say, "Whoever that don't own the house." "It's my house." "It's somebody else's house." You got to get all the Kenbo, call everybody on this house. Ain't nobody going to put their money out on that. So, and the town trying to keep up these houses or waiting till they fall down before they say something, you know, I'm saying that.
Any other comments?
What would take place now?
The next item on the agenda, the ordinance to authorize the demolition.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to do this report for you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate your work and your opinion. Counselor, is there anything further we need to do at this stage, or can we have the...
I think Elizabeth probably needs to at least be a witness for purposes of getting in the letter that we had from one owner, and also your conversation, your email conversation with the other owner. I think that's significant in for the record if somebody complains later on, you know, you've got two people who are owners that say they don't disagree with what needs to happen. I think Mr. Skinner wishes he could do something himself, but that may not happen.
So briefly talk about Mr. Halsey, who is in Enfield, and he's the letter or the email that we received of the letter today, and I think it's been emailed to you all. But to summarize, he explained how the heir property was broken down, which was quite convoluted and has resulted in people that are very far removed from the original occupants now owning interest in the house. Mr. Halsey said that he felt like he was no longer an owner of the property, and he gave reasons why, detailed that, turning over his interest to other folks who eventually turned over to Mr. Skinner. But he also, at the end of his statement, said that the house has been in disrepair for quite some time, that no one other than Mr. Skinner had been allowed to do anything with regard to the property since 1999. So the other owners of record have not invested in the property since 1999 or before. That leads us to Mr. Skinner, who I said I've had several telephone conversations with over the last six weeks or so, and as I stated, he has not disputed the condition of the building. I think he is sad that it's gotten to this point and regrets that it is facing demolition, but he does not dispute its condition, and he has received Mr. DeLucia's report, and we've talked about it on the telephone, so he's very aware of the specific reasons why this is an imminent danger. Today, he indicated that he is interested in pursuing his own quotes for demolition of the property that he would pay for himself rather than the town having to take action, and I think that is because he has paid the taxes on the property for quite some time, he's kept the grass mowed for quite some time, and I suppose he's thinking he could probably get a lower quote and then would not have to pay the lean that would be assessed for the cost of demolition on the property off. One concern that I expressed with him is that the property has been declared unsafe, an imminent danger, and so there is an impetus to act quickly. We can't delay, have an open-ended, okay, well, if you find someone to demolish it, sort of process. One thing that I brought up with him, and Mr. Ellis certainly chime in here at any point, is that the council may set an absolute date by which the structure must be demolished, and he's welcome to pursue his own private demolition, but it must occur by a certain time period, and the town will simultaneously continue our process. The next step for the town, should you approve the ordinance to demolish, would be an advertisement of a contents sale. We would have to sell the contents of the house, although I'm a little unsure how we're going to get them out, considering how dangerous it is, but there are quite a few, quite a lot of items actually in the, in the house. But there are quite a few, quite a lot of items actually in the house. By auction, the proceeds would then be used to offset the cost of demolition. So, we, there's a procedure by which we advertise that, hold that sale, and then after that is when we would be able to allow the contractors on the property to demolish the property. All of this would be conducted post haste, you know, given your instructions, but we're still talking about advertising requirements for that sale, et cetera. I'm thinking that if we move just really quickly, that maybe by the end of the first week in February, start of the second week in February, we may be able to be starting So, that's the timeline that I know going forward and also gives you some information about Mr. Skinner's intention. He has been sent the bids that you all received, so he knows the quotes that the town has received. He also was sent our contractor list, so we've given him everything we can to help him make local contacts for demolition contractors. And he also indicated he would let me know as soon as possible what his decision was and I was going to call him tomorrow with your decision.
First, I think if we go listen to him, he said thirty, I think it's required thirty day notice before you take action. I don't know, fifteen day notice? I don't know what it is here for sitting here, give somebody a notice perhaps, but if it was fifteen days or thirty days in this case, then that thirty day or thirty first day, the man's supposed, somebody's supposed to be tearing it down. Yeah, we go another way. But I've seen the contract, I think was four. And you have to be aware, because this is hitting whoever that want, because you're paying taxes. Now, when you, when you look at that contract, you can't get the ones because it says this man is low. And I think I saw one about eight, nine thousand dollars, less than ten thousand dollars. Now, that's a big house. When you carry a truckload of trash to the garbage place, then you got to pay, pay them by, pay by the ton. And there's a lot of tons of garbage in that house. So, you have to be careful how you pick somebody that's because they're real cheap and you have to be careful how you pick somebody real high. So, you kind of got to know what to do.
Can I ask Elizabeth a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
You said we must go in and gather what's in there and put it up for an auction? If the house is decayed the way that it is, wouldn't somebody's life be in danger going in there? Wouldn't it be best just to tear the whole thing down and just let it go?
I would feel very uncomfortable sending anyone in there under our pretense. I would feel very uncomfortable.
And anything, anything in there is probably rotten to the core.
That's probably true. There's a statute or requirement for this process. I mean, it's just a step we've got to go before we demolish it. I mean, certainly I don't think we would recommend that you've got to go in there to get a refrigerator out of a building that you know's gonna collapse the minute you start out with the door with refrigerator, but, you know, it's just got to be something that Elizabeth does with whoever to make an inspection, see if there's anything there they can pull out safely and try to sell. Chances of selling it are probably pretty slim too, but it's again another hoop, the law makes us jump through before we...
So, it's a process. We've got to go through.
So, can we just give them a certain period of time, fifteen days, thirty days or what? Just give them that amount of time for them to go in there and get out what they want?
Well, it's not so much...
Because I'm telling you, I would feel very uncomfortable for any of our folks to go in there.
I hear you and I think they would hear you that you're saying to them, don't jeopardize or take anything risk to get anything out of there to sell. But I think as far as giving the owners any notice, that's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it is to get anything out of there that has value because the law assumes they've already abandoned it and tried to sell it. And again, that's the only hoop, we got to jump through. I think the owners have been given all the notice you can give them. And, you know, my recommendation would be to, if you see fit, to adopt the demolition ordinance, is just adopt it and let the process take its course. If they beat us to the punch and get it demolished before we do, great.
Right. Agreed.
Okay.
Loud and clear.
And we would include in our record on this matter, Elizabeth's testimony, her letter from Mr. Halsey and also her email today of her conversation with Mr. Skinner and her packet that she gave each of you, that would be part of the record on which we would, your decision would be based.
Very good. Okay, I think we have done a pretty thorough evaluation of what needs to be done. We've had professional testimony, we've had the staff opinions, we've had legal recommendations. The chair would like to call for a motion to accept the ordinance as presented so we can get this process moving before it inflicts any further danger on the public.
Sorry.
Just, if you don't mind, just to, before you close the hearing, to ask if there's anyone who wishes to testify on the, anybody here who wishes to give any further testimony about it? Just so we know, there's not, nobody here who wants to testify on the issue of enduring the hearing?
I asked for heirs or friends and nobody's...
Then I would conclude the hearing and then take up the motion.
All right, that being said, the hearing relative to the demolition case that we have been discussing is now closed and we are now in a position where we can entertain a motion to direct the town's building inspector to demolish the structure previously discussed.
Absolutely.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? I have a question. In the motion, based on Elizabeth's comments, should we put a timeline for, or will that just take care of itself with the passage of the ordinance?
I think it'll take care of itself by passage of the ordinance because again, Elizabeth's gonna take the ordinance that you've adopted and she's gonna start forward on the getting the personal property, the contents checked off. The town's gonna accept the bid and, you know, award a contract and again, that takes care of it. The only reason you want to do a deadline is if you wanted to give the owner additional opportunity.
Any further questions on the motion? Here in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, motion carries, ordinance is passed, we'll keep the wheels moving. Thank y'all very much. Very informative. This is our first test on this process.
The sooner it comes down, the better.
Yeah, sounds like leaning on someone else's property. Okay, next on our agenda tonight, it's audit season or the review thereof from the previous fiscal year. And I'd like to welcome our new auditors to the meeting tonight, Donna Winburne and Courtney Riddick. They've been hard at work with our staff putting this document together and we look forward to your report. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for having me and Courtney, I appreciate it. She, she lives in Wilmington now and works remotely and so she was nice enough to join us tonight after all this snow, so. I apologize that you have a paper document in front of you. I know you all are paperless, believe it or not, we are too, but I don't know that accountants will ever be completely paperless. We do have to send out bound documents to various organizations and Marie takes care of that. And so, I always bring them on the night of presentation. I don't have a PowerPoint to go over. I know you do have PDFs, but if you don't mind tonight, we're just gonna use paper, we'll go old school and maybe next year I'll come in with something a little more electronic for you.
And next year, I'd like to paper one again.
You still...
Still like paper.
I won't tell you what a councilman told me one time, what he actually did with his because he did not keep it. So, I didn't know how you all would feel about it, but thankfully you're a little bit more gracious than he was at the time. So, I appreciate you having us. Thank you. I am pleased to present the financial report for the town of Edington for the year end of June 30th, 2017. The financial statements are management's responsibility. My responsibility is to express an opinion on them based on our audit. We have issued an unmodified opinion and that's the highest level that you can receive. It means the statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you'll turn to page 16 in your financial statements. This is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. The first column is your general fund and if you'll look at the third number up from the bottom, this is your unassigned fund balance. And that's usually the number that, that most are interested in and that number is one million eighty-six thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. And you can see right above it, there is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars that's been assigned to this year, for the fund balance in the year that we're in currently. Turn two more pages, please, to page 18. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balances for the governmental funds. And again, the general fund is in the first column and it's about, let's see, the fifth line up from the bottom shows the net change for the year. There was an increase for this year of four hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars. Now, you'll notice right below that, we do have a prior period adjustment for the general fund and that is a little over sixty thousand dollars and it's due to a receivable that we had on the books, but we're not actually going to get or it doesn't look like we're gonna get it on the town hall renovation. And so, rather than just let it sit there through the testing that we did, we determined that it needed to come off. Okay, so, rather than have that affect your current year revenue and expenses, we book it as a prior period adjustment. So, it comes off the balance sheet and it doesn't impact your profit loss. Now, what that, what that means also is when we talk about the unassigned fund balance, again, that number was one million eighty-six thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. And so, the increase in your general fund was four hundred eighty-six thousand two sixty-seven before the prior period adjustment. But you're, actually, your unassigned went down some and the difference is because those numbers all above it, like you're restricted for stabilization by state statute, the, some of the other restrictions like for transportation, which is Powell bill. When those numbers change, your unassigned changes also. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, you all already know that, but that's why you can have an increase for the year and you can still have a decrease in your unassigned. So, let's, we'll keep going and we are going to go now to exhibit seven, which is on page And this is the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund net position for the enterprise funds. We've got electric, water and sewer and airport. And then the fifth number up from the bottom shows the change in net position and for the electric fund, we had an increase for the year of three hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars. Water and sewer had an increase of two hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then the airport fund had a decrease of a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Now, the largest thing that I need to go over on here is we do have a prior period adjustment for electric and water and sewer also. And that number, you can see for the electric fund was a decrease of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-four and for the water, one hundred twenty-eight thousand forty-five dollars. So, it's a combination of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. What that prior period is, similar to what we talked about with the general fund, there, you have receivables on your books for the customers of the town. And so, when we look at the balance sheet, we look at one day at a time, which is your year end, on June 30th, and there's a certain amount, this is what the receivables are. Well, that amount did not agree with the subsidiary ledger, which is all your customer balances. And so, in order to correct the receivables to what they are at the end of the year and we didn't want to affect the profit loss for the year, then we had to make the prior period adjustment to correct the balance sheet. Okay? So, it does reduce the receivable and it reduces the equity in those funds. Now, I know that's a big one, so, do you have any specific questions? We spent a lot of time, a lot of time, going through, making sure, testing. Your prior finance officer, Jennifer, spent, I would say, weeks analyzing to make sure that we were coming down to the right number. I don't, I don't do that lightly at all. In fact, almost took a devil's advocate approach to, I don't want to do that, let's find out how, I cannot have to do that, just to make sure. Lot of testing and reviewing analyticals with it too, with prior years. So, that's a long explanation. I know that's not very detailed. My work papers are detailed, so I just wasn't sure. If you have any specific questions that you wanted to go over with it? And of course, we went over it with Ann Marie and we've talked to the prior auditor and his staff and, and so, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
What's the time period that this accumulated over?
Well, I don't know if it was an accumulation. I think that...
Was it one time, dude?
I think so. And so, once the balance sheet's off and then every year after that, it's kind of like when you have a mistake and then every year after that is fine, so it's only wrong in the first and the last year. We seem to think it goes back close to 10 years, that we think, we think, because trying to look at the analytical of the years, I could look at and see, well, when did it come down? There was write-offs of about that amount back in that time period that we can see on the billing side of it, but not on the books themselves. So, so like I said, with receivables, you've got, you know, everybody's name and who owes money on June 30th and you come down to the total and that total should agree to the financials after you take into account allowance for bad debt. And so, when it doesn't, then you try to go figure out why and so, like I said, we think that that's when that happened, was back in those, those earlier years. And I know just in conversation with the prior and with the staff and your staff and I think that there was, you know, and making sure that the computer system, you know, that they felt comfortable with that and, which we do now, we've tested that and so, that's about the timeframe. I can't speak specifically and I, I really wish I could. I've tried to, to come up with the exact reason on exactly why and I don't have that precise answer. What I do know is, is what the receivables are now and we've tested that, what they should be. And then what makes sense? And so, you kind of go at it from three or four different ways and when you come down to the same conclusion, then that's where we are.
I just made a comment that Donna met with me and I reported to you all the results of our meeting. My takeaway is that she and Courtney and Jennifer worked really, really hard to try and make the numbers match and Donna could not, she just couldn't get there. And I told, and she felt badly about that because she knew this was, you know, gonna have to change the town's net position, but it is what it is and I think, I think, you know, a good, this is a good example of why periodic changing auditors, having another fresh set of eyes to review is a good thing. I did call the local government commission, I spoke with the director, I wanted her to know because, you know, this change affects our wholesale rate, our retail rates in the electric system. And so, and I've reported to you the analysis that we're doing, I'm going to a meeting Thursday and we'll get some updated numbers from the agency on a wholesale rate increase that's projected for April. So, we're gonna be working with Booth and Associates, our rate analysts, to look at what the restated financials mean in terms of rates going forward. what the restated financials mean in terms of rates going forward. And I think I reported to you that Booth thinks it's probably, when we lowered rates in April, we reduced rates by 3.1%, we probably should have only lowered rates by, excuse me, about 1.5%. So we're going to have to make up that difference. Now, what I want to do is, you know, talk to Booth and look at, how quickly do we have to make that difference? Do we have to do it in April? Can we look at phasing it? So we'll be coming back to you with a strategy there. We asked the local government commission, you know, was there anything else that they recommended that we do? And they told us they thought we weren't, you know, being responsible and doing the right thing. They would make a note in the file, so that when the LGC analysts review it, you know, they're aware. And they were appreciative of us calling ahead of time and reporting and not letting them.
Mayor?
Yes?
I could. I kind of like what you said about new eyes looking at it. But if this is 10 years old, there's been three accountants that's been through here that have not caught this if it's 10 years old. And that's a whole lot...
I don't know that it's...
We don't know that it is, but we don't know that it isn't.
That's why I hate to not say something specific, but I don't know. What I know is the receivables that we have now at June 30th, and I can't, that's what it is.
Right.
And so when the write-off, when the reduction occurred, I don't know, because I wasn't here, and I wasn't in the environment that was there at the time, and what was, I don't know what they knew. So, and that's the hardest part I've had with it, is that I want to be able to say, black and white, you know, here's what it is, and it was this situation, or it was this person, and I can't. And, you know, that's not my, I know that's not my role, but I knew you would want to know. I mean, I would want to know. I know it's...
An awful lot of money.
And I don't want to stand up here as the first-time auditor for you and do that.
I'm thankful to death that you are. We're finding out.
No, and I'm not, I don't, that's not, if you know me, you know that's not who I am, and it's not what I'm trying to do either. But I do just, I wanted to help, and I want to make sure that we go about it in a very, we did it in a very systematic way, and to make sure that we were getting the right thing. So again, and I can't speak to, I have had clients that I've had for 25 years, and, you know, we always try, we talk every year, and we try to change it up a little bit, and put somebody else in charge of this area, and come at it from a different way. So I know that, you know, I'm not trying to downplay me, but a fresh set of eyes is not a bad thing. But I can't say that, I mean, your prior auditor has a great reputation. I don't, I'm not saying that, you know, it was his fault at all, at all. You know, again, I don't know the situation at the time. All I know is now, and you're right, hindsight is 20/20.
Well, maybe with y'all and our new financer right there, everything's going to be okay.
That's a lot of pressure.
It is. I know it is.
Anyway, I'm sorry to have to, this is part of the presentation, but it's, I'll say full disclosure, too. It's good for everybody to know and understand, so...
Thank you all for putting all the time into this.
You're welcome. So, anything specific about that anymore? Then we'll go on to the rest.
We'll just go forward, right?
Just go forward. Just keep swimming. Okay, so let's go towards the back of the statement, okay? And on page, they start with letters. Go to A3.
What page are you on?
A3. It's in the very, very back. You can almost start in the back and then come forward a little bit. We do have four findings, and, you know, they are very, we try to write them as much detail as possible, so they really stand on their own. And I know you've already had a chance to read this, so I'm not going to go through them in detail, but I'll just mention which each of them are. The first one deals with internal control over financial statement preparation. And quite honestly, anytime we have a prior period adjustment, we have to put that in there, because that just means that the statements went out with an error. Okay? So that's what that is about. The second page, A4, the second finding, rather, is over the budget ordinance and amendments. It's not the ordinance, actually, it's really an amendment that just was out of balance by $1,000. So, and you can read over that. The third one is on just bank reconciliations and making sure that they're done timelier. And then the last one is pre-audit of expenditures. You know, we are required to do a lot of continuing education, and over the course of the last year or two, this is really, they harp on this, on the pre-audit. And it can really help you, and it can really hurt you at times if you don't. And so just because of the gravity that what we're seeing lately, we just felt like we needed to put that in there on making sure that the pre-audit is done. Now, I want to say one thing. We added another paragraph on context, because anytime, I hate to put finding in if I don't have to, I don't do it, but sometimes it's warranted. But at the same time, I like to say the context of what's going on. It isn't that there's no pre-audit happening, okay? It's the documentation of scene, okay? So, and I know, in a small organization, we do things all the time that everybody just knows what everybody's doing, and it works. But when we go to audit, it's the documentation part that we just have to show. So that's why I wanted to say there that, you know, the samples, we selected samples for testing, and we noted that there is constant communication between the town manager, the finance officer, various department heads, and that, you know, they're aware of everything that's going on. It's just that the documentation piece needs to be a little bit more. And we could see that just from the time that we spent in town hall. I mean, it's very much open door, and everybody is on the same page, so I put, we put that in there to make sure that you knew.
Question, are any of these repeat deficiencies, or are all these new?
I don't think so. No, sir.
The bank reconciliation, it seems to be like I've heard that several times in the past.
It may have been in a management letter. I don't think it was a finding last year.
It was a finding years ago. We had a hard time converting with the new system.
I will say, though, in the job that I have, you're exactly right, the pre-audit is very important to the LGC. And they're going to even be tougher on that. I mean, I can see that happening, especially after what just happened in Wade County and surrounding areas. That's going to be tough if you don't have that stamp that she, I hope you've got one on your desk.
I think you already made sure of that.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Don't be afraid to use it.
Or not.
Or not, yeah. That's true.
That's the hardest part sometimes. So that's what's in the statement. Just briefly, I'm just going to let you know, you've got two letters also in front of you and by PDF. The first one is a little bit thicker. That one is the governance letter. And what that is, is we are required to communicate with you if there were any new pronouncements, if there were any issues with management, if we had trouble with the audit, things like that. And we didn't have any trouble with, everybody was great with all the help. And then we also have to attach when we have adjusting entries, and so we've done that. Please understand, these are not all of our audit adjustments, okay? Some of them are, but the majority, a large majority of it, are adjustments that Jennifer had to make while we were here in the field. So once we come out and start the audit, then we don't get another revised trial balance. We make, you know, the finance officer will give us adjustments at times. So that's what those are, okay? And we have to report that to you. So that's what that is. The second one, which is the two-page letter, is the management letter. And again, similar to the findings, I'm not even going to go over the headers on that, but you can take that and read through. Those are just helpful suggestions. I do want to say just a couple of things. It was a very, it was a very good experience. It was a long audit, and I told, I kept telling Anne-Marie, "I'm so sorry I'm still here." But in the first year, it always takes a little bit longer, and we did want to make sure that we got everything right. But they were so kind and so helpful, and really, I appreciate it, because it makes a big difference in getting us the information we need. And I know Jennifer's not here, but really great things to say about, you know, the help that she gave and the analysis that she went through. And so I just wanted you all to know that, that was a big help, even though, you know, there are some difficulties and some challenges through that, but the staff was really great. So, thank you. And Courtney's always great, so...
Mayor, I asked Donna if, given Virginia's new position with us and her new role, if we could visit, and Donna will help us go through some of the recommendations in the management letter. And when Virginia and I reviewed them, there were already things that were recommended that she said, well, we used to do that for General Motors. So she's got a good handle on the recommendations. But we're going to do, it's great that Donna's firm is here, and that we can go up the road and sit and meet, and she'll help us get our game plan together, so we look forward to that.
Me, too.
Any further questions, counsel?
Virginia, you do have her telephone number, don't you?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Not a question, but Donna, you made, earlier in your statement, you said that if you know me, you know that that's not me. I do know you, I've known you most of your life. Your firm has done my taxes for many, many years, and kept me out of jail all those years. So...
She didn't make it.
I tell you all the time, you can go. I don't go with you, though.
She really is good at it.
So we're delighted to have you onboard.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the thorough job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna, and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. And before we leave the subject, it was oversight on my part, I did want to introduce Virginia Smith to everyone tonight. Virginia, if you would, stand up, and we'd like to welcome you to the Edington Administrative Team, and look forward to your fine work in our finance office. Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to it, once we get the holidays and all the snow gone, so I can actually sit there and do something to these trucks. But I'm looking forward to it.
Great, good to have you. All right, moving now to new business. Elizabeth, the bid award for the demolition of 130 East Freemason Street. Please, ma'am.
Thank you again. I believe you received in your packet the bid, an email version of bids that we did receive yesterday. We got three written bids submitted and one emailed bid. The high bidder was CNM Land Development at $21,475 with a $150 per cubic yard charge for the fill soil. The low bidder was You Scrap It out of Mary Hill, which is $8,475 with a $12 per 10 cubic yard load of top fill soil. And then we had two that were extremely close. William Holly Construction at $10,950 and $75 per 10 cubic yard of fill soil, and CNW Grading and Excavation, which was $11,000 even, and $100 per 10 cubic yard of fill soil. And CW Grading and Excavation is out of Elizabeth City. So Elizabeth City, Mary Hill, and then CNM Land Development, a semi-local Belvedere area, and then obviously, Mr. Holly's Construction Company is right here. So those are the bids. If you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer it. I know that Anne-Marie had indicated to you all that it is our intention, after you select the bidder, or select the contractor, whoever you'd like to use, that our staff, town staff, including the building inspectors and public works, would like to meet with this contractor to go over their methodology, particularly given the close nature of where the neighbor's property is and what their plan is to protect that neighbor's property and their ingress and egress throughout the process, so...
So the action item would be just to award the bid?
Yes, sir, that's what we would ask.
And you recommended a certain one of the bidders?
Well, we always say low bidder, but that is certainly at your discretion, and as I said, no matter who you choose, we are going to be meeting with them to go over more details about their plan.
Are you aware of anybody that has used the low bidder before You Scrap It?
Yes. In fact, I believe we used them on, let me find my bid sheet. It's like Sam had a note that we used them at 213 West Gale Street, so not too far away for a demolition. I guess with the...
That was the mobile home?
Okay.
Might have been, or...
No.
No, that was not, that was a house.
So this must be near, something involved with a police station, I'm guessing, West Gale. On the right side? No, on the wrong side, West Gale Street.
200, it's probably that house, the side of the trailer.
The house that was in between, it was the houses that were connected.
Yes.
That's the house that it was. Sorry. I figured it out there.
Mayor, we would ask that you would authorize the low bidder contingent upon staff's, you know, due diligence and acceptance that the method and procedure that the contractor proposes is satisfactory, and then if it's not, we would go to the next low bidder and do the same thing until we're satisfied, given the location and proximity to the...
Okay.
Is that okay, Lou?
Yeah, I mean, you're just saying you want the lowest responsible bidder as determined by the staff.
Okay. The chair then would ask for a motion to select the lowest responsible bidder as determined by the staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any further's no? Thank y'all very much. Job well done. Now, item B. Anne-Marie, before, though, I would like to welcome Sally Holloway with Habitat, and board member Terry Waugh with Habitat. Thank y'all for being with us, and thank y'all for expressing an interest in these properties as they become available. So with that being said, Anne-Marie, I'll pass it off to you to talk about their requests.
I will, briefly. I'm just so excited when Elizabeth emailed me, I think, over the storm, the storm, that they had a great idea, with a great suggestion came from Sally and Terry. We have been trying to figure out a way that to statutorily exchange, or give, or sell a small, non-conforming lot that the town owns on the 200 block of E-Scale. And I believe the town acquired that years and years ago, long before me, through a community development block grant. And it was, there probably was a structure there, and the structure was torn down. Habitat has recently purchased two lots beside our lot, and they would very much like to get the town to give gift our lot, so then they can be combined, and they would have enough property to build two structures, two units. And Hood's been terrific in trying to help us find a way to make that transaction work. Well, a light bulb went off at a Habitat meeting. They own a lot on the corner of Old Hertford Road in Tyler Lane, right next to a town sewer lift station. And they asked, would we consider... And they asked, would we consider, could we do a trade? So I asked Hood to do that research and Hood, do you want to tell the council how we would do that?
Yeah, the answer to Ann Marie's inquiry was that the town can. GS 168, 271 permits the town to exchange real property, one piece of real property for another piece of real property. It also says that it, it's supposed to be full and fair exchange, but that, that doesn't mean dollar for dollar. You can take into consideration some of the intangible and subjective factors that make, like the instance, the piece that, a small lot next to the pumping station may have more value to the town, obviously, than it would anybody else. And again, those kind of factors can be taken into consideration as far as Habitat taking what you're proposing to exchange with them and turning it into, um, you know, new affordable housing in, in your zone that you've already declared. Again, I think if the council wishes to make it work, we can make it work. And it's a, a process, you, you adopt, you decide you want to go forward with it, then we'll draw up a notice that gets published in the newspaper ten days before the meeting at which you would authorize the exchange.
Mayor, I just would say that you all remember when we, when you all adopted the redevelopment zone shortly after, you entered into a memorandum of understanding with Habitat and you pledged to try to work with them and focus in the redevelopment zone to help create new owner occupied housing. So, um, the lot that you own and the lots that Habitat own are in the Oak, North Oakham Street redevelopment zone. And Elizabeth has been working with Sally and Terry and Sam worked with them also. So we're, we're just so excited to find this possible, um, solution. I talked to Corey recently about, would we like to have that lot? Sure, we're always interested, as Hood said, in trying to expand our footprint around existing infrastructure. So it, it really would be a win-win.
Very good, and thank everyone for their participation and interest. With that being said, the, uh, the action would then be to proceed with? As you said, if we would like for it to happen, we'll try to make it happen.
In other words, direct staff to proceed to try to make it happen.
Okay. Chair would.
I'm sorry, our goal would be to have it ready for you at your regular meeting in February.
Okay.
This benefits everybody all the way around. It really does.
Chair would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to move forward with that in hopes of being able to formalize and facilitate the exchanges just talked about. I got a question, um, not on that, but, um.
Did we both?
Yeah.
That's a character, man. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? My question was for Elizabeth on the proceeding, uh, on the previous rather, uh, discussion about Freemason Street. When that lot is cleared, it seems like based upon the report that we got from everyone, that the setbacks were not adhered to even that house was built or the one beside it. So when it, it goes back to productive use for the next dwelling, then all of our current ordinances would be in place and we wouldn't have one that would lean over on the neighbor's property, correct?
We would certainly do everything we could to prevent that. We do have a, a stipulation that if it's a non-conforming lot, so that lot, that lot may be at least fifty feet wide, but if it's less than fifty feet, we have some flexibility we have to give in order for them to make use of their property of record. But I don't think, I think this property should be large enough, that's such a big house, that likely what would go back would not be that large and would easily meet the setback requirement.
Flexibility, but not to the detriment of the neighbor's property. Okay.
You think that we would set back rules when that house was built?
Okay, Ann Marie, uh, item D, please, ma'am.
Sir, um, actually, um, item C.
I'm sorry, item C, yeah.
We have a budget amendment that our new finance officer prepared last week and was in your packet and this is, um, the kind of budget amendments we really like. It's when we amend the budget to reflect revenue that is coming in from a grant and you all authorize the grant from Division of Coastal Management to study and analyze the drainage system that makes up the Peanut Drive and Old Hertford Road drainage area. And we need to amend the budget to show that eighteen thousand dollar revenue item coming in from the state and then have an expense line item where we can pay the engineer for the study, which he has submitted in a draft form. So we're almost ready to roll with implementing, um, the recommendations of that study and get Old Hertford Road at North Broad Street back together again, bigger and better drainage than before.
Ten inches makes a big difference, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, do we entertain a motion to, um, proceed with the grant application?
Same with.
First and a second to do so. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? And item E, request for no parking zone, please.
Okay, and first we'll go over the grant application, mayor?
Why am I getting here?
Just one step ahead of us. The town has the opportunity.
Trying to leave, I was almost.
The town has the opportunity to apply for a grant through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. It's their urgent repairs program. And I summarized in the, um, agenda review memo that this grant would fund deferred forgivable loans of up to eighteen thousand, I'm sorry, up to eight thousand dollars for emergency home repairs and modifications to very low income owner occupied homes. Eligible households are those with one or more full-time household member with special needs, either, um, an elderly person, disabled, or a veteran, or a child under six with elevated blood, lead levels. We would be required, in order to have a competitive application, you all are gonna have to spend some local money. And we recommend that you agree to provide up to ten thousand four hundred dollars to supplement the hundred thousand dollars that we'll apply for. And, um, we think that we'll be able to help around, um, anywhere from ten to thirteen people, depending on, um, the, the amount of work that needs to be done. The grant application is due soon and before we submit it, we just want to make sure that you're okay with us putting in the grant application a match.
Ann Marie, where would the match money come from, again?
Well, that's a good question. We would have to budget for it and the timing is by the time that we would get an award notice and then by, then when they give you the, um, so many days to execute the grant agreement, would be probably into, um, next fiscal year.
Next year.
And we would budget for it through general fund revenues.
Just a further question, when you, if you didn't budget and you needed the money, would you do a budget amendment to cover that particular? Okay.
Once you get this grant, uh, then is there a certain amount of houses that you have to help for the money that you get? And, yeah, I would like to know more about that, how that operates here. Because people have to, they qualify, they have to get their, uh, fill out some forms and, and tell what is needed in the house. And someone has to go there and see for themselves because, first of all, the money's for to bring homes up to standard limit. And, and, uh, I, I'd like to know more how this process works.
Well, I'd be glad to, um, meet with you and go over the, how the grant works, but briefly, everything that you said is part of the grant requirements. We, we have to advertise, we have to solicit for applications, people have to fill out detailed applications. We have a consultant that helps us, they verify income to make sure that people are, you know, reporting the right amount. And then the consultant has trained inspectors and that, then go and do an inspection and see whether or not the houses meet the requirements of the grant. It's quite involved, but I'd be glad to sit down and show you all the procedures.
I would love to see them because, um, even contractors, they can bid on the right. And when they, if they get the contract, and then they go in the house and start working, it might be something bad, you pull the carpet up and then they might see some floors, you can, you can walk and tell where floors be with the carpet on it. But when we pull that carpet up, uh, you can see something else. So, this is a require of, of order change and how do you work with that?
I'm sorry, it requires a?
How, how do you work with order change on a contractor?
Orders, yeah. It's once in a while we do have those and there's, they're, the way that we would set up our grant application is there'll be a little contingency money and so that if they do find, uh, uncover work, additional work that needs to be done.
Ann Marie, is this also, I know we've done some of these in the past, several of them, it seems like, thank goodness that we were able to get the money. Some of them we have to work outside of the city limits. Is this one of those that we have to work outside of the city limits?
Good question. This one, in order to qualify, we have to serve a population of five thousand people and our population has fallen a little bit below that. So we inquired, we asked, could we extend our jurisdiction to solicit applications in the ETJ? And they said yes. So we don't have to solicit countywide and we'll really be focusing hard on our redevelopment zones.
I mean, the only thing I was thinking is, and not that we don't want to help everybody we can, but, you know, if the town's got to come up with ten thousand four hundred bucks, I don't want to, I don't want the town's tax people paying for something in time.
Sometimes, sometimes the way that works is that, um, some houses might need eight thousand dollars and you got a ten thousand dollar budget for the house. And if it don't take but six thousand dollars, you can take that money, uh, hold it up and put it on a house, that might need twelve thousand dollars for it. But it has to balance out either, you might. That's what, that's the balance, and I don't know, you know, maybe change.
I'm not sure about that, but we can check.
Okay, um, relative to the grant application with the local match, chair would entertain a motion to proceed.
Same with.
Second.
Motion and a second to proceed with that as described with the local match. Further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, uh, item E, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir, um, we received a request, and I'm sorry this is out on an action item at your January meeting. I should have had it earlier and it slipped off of my radar, but we had a request in late November from the property owner of Pembroke Hall. You might have noticed the installation of a new fence on his property and the pillars of the, some of the pillars of the fence have impacted, mainly, I think it's egress when he's leaving the property. And so he's asked if, um, the town would consider establishing, taking two parking spaces and converting them to a no parking zone. And we've looked at it, um, we've talked to the neighbors and.
So it must be okay.
And the neighbors are fine with it.
I don't think I have a conflict, do you?
How is your house, Matt?
Absolutely not.
So we would ask that you approve the establishment of no parking zone at those two spaces on the 100 block of West King Street.
Did you talk to Charlie Grant?
I did, and he was fine.
Cause they, they parked there more than anybody.
And he said, you ought to talk to Sam, though. I thought it was sweet, both of them out for each other.
So that'll be. If we're already there, this would be continuing one.
I, I don't think so. I mean, I, I think, if there was, it's worn off.
So they're gonna paint no parking and line it, okay, two spots.
Just as yellow. Just the yellow on the gutter, or you're gonna paint no parking?
Well, I, I don't know what our standard is, I have to get with, um, Captain Brown and Corey, but we'll.
Yeah, I, I'd like less is more, I don't want.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a whole bunch of stripes out there. Small stripes.
And I think, first of all, if we have the town or just the taxes, just put there, um, within the parking zone.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the requests, uh, did we have a motion?
Same with.
Second.
Second, do we have one?
Second.
Thank you. All, all in favor to request the, uh, no parking zone as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Council members, do you have any items you'd like to share with us, considered timely and important?
Anything about the appraisal of the Congress Building yet?
I have been hounding the appraiser for a date and he's been, uh, finishing up work. Then he was gonna come before the holidays and he was gonna come the week after the holidays and then the storm and I begged him to call me today. I said, I know I'm gonna get asked tonight, please let me know when you're gonna be coming to Eddington and I didn't hear from him, so I will follow up again tomorrow.
Anything on the Hinton Hotel?
I did, um, reach out to Bob Hauser right after the new year and they have recently received the feasibility study that they commissioned and he said that some of the, um, performance indicators increased, which was, is a good thing based on, you know, certain number of wins and that they're looking at their financial model and they'll be in touch.
Don't they have a timeline? When they came and met with us, didn't we say, by such and such a date?
We, um, they were aiming to.
Of course, you're running up against the, uh, reporting back to the state for the.
The grant, correct. I told them we needed to know something by the end of January so that we could report to the state. Now, I, when we met, Elizabeth helped with, they, they thought they would know something sometime early in this calendar year.
Did the new tax, uh, hurdle many at all, or?
No, the, the, um, my understanding is that the tax bill restored the federal.
All of?
All of them.
Not, not the new market, but the, the other ones, yeah.
The historic tax credits that they would get.
Historic credit made it.
Right, but the new markets, gone.
Yeah, they gone.
Really?
The markets are gone.
For ten years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is a sunset.
But I mean, everybody did a great job of getting those start tax credits in there, which was really important.
Well, since he's asking about the other two, let me ask you about, since we wrote off sixty-seven thousand dollars tonight on the, the construction that we did in Town Hall upstairs, any word on that at all?
No, I need to schedule a time for you to meet with Hood in close session and talk about your options, so we'll try to do that at your next meeting.
Okay.
We're marketing that space, right?
We are.
How are we marketing, I don't know where we were.
DDE, Mallory, our, you know, the Eddington Show and Partnership. The mayor told me to reach out and I will to reach out to NC East, Tim Ivey's aware of it, so, and if you have other suggestions.
Are we actually spending money to market or we just hand it out to people saying, here, help us?
Publicizing, yeah, we're not spending money, but publicizing if, if you think that we should look at doing it that way. we should look at doing it that way, certainly want to consider.
All right, any other items timely and important?
I don't have a timely and important item, but if they find me physically fit on Friday, on the 16th, Tuesday, I will have a knee replacement and I will be missing from the chamber for a little while. So just to let everybody know why I'm not here. If they find me physically fit.
You walked in here.
Thank you for sharing that with us, best of luck, I hope you can get it done.
Thank you, I do too.
All right, now I'll turn the floor over to anyone here present tonight that would like to address the town council with any concerns, questions, comments, floor is yours. We just ask that you step to the podium and identify yourself. Okay, seeing no one, council members, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, thank y'all very much.
You see, the hip replacements are, these are knee replacements.